The call for the call in program.
Lindsay, are you there?
Hello, this is Lindsay.
Hi, we haven't started quite yet, so sit tight. Should we start with Nathan? Oh, it's called the meeting to order. Um, and I know Nathan is, oh, there he is. Perfect timing. Alright, so let's start the roll call.
Mayor Brook. Can I be there next to you? Here. Lieutenant Lawrence.
Here.
Lieutenant Lawrence.
Here.
Lieutenant Lawrence.
Here.
Lieutenant Lawrence.
Here.
Lieutenant Sean Lamore.
Here, be a telephone.
City Manager McKee.
Here.
Attorney Moore.
Here.
Alright, and if we can rise for the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. McKee, would you do the honors of leading this meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we are starting this evening with a little acknowledgement of Dan McKee, our current city manager through the end of the day tomorrow. So if you could meet me up front, that would be great. Alright, would any of your family like to join us? You should come up, immediate family should come up. Would you like to introduce them quickly?
Yes, I'd be glad to. I've got my wife in the middle and my son Joel on the side and my daughter Teresa who lives in Missouri. A little bit of surprise. She's alright. And of course, I've got family out front too. I have my father-in-law, my mother-in-law, my sister-in-law, my sister-in-law, and my brother-in-law.
Alright, well, I would like to start with a proclamation in recognition of Dan McKee for his service to the city of Port Angeles from 1985 to 2018. Whereas Dan McKee diligently served the citizens of Port Angeles as a member of the Port Angeles Fire Department from 1985 to 2012 and as the city manager from 2012 until 2018. And whereas Dan began his distinguished career with Port Angeles as a firefighter paramedic, in 1993, he became a medical officer and in 1996, he was promoted to fire marshal. Dan earned the title of Fire Chief for the city of Port Angeles in 2000 and he served in that capacity until 2012. And whereas, after much convincing from city council, Dan agreed in early 2012 to serve as interim city manager. By May of 2012, council offered Dan the full-time position as city manager and offer which he gladly accepted. And whereas, becoming city manager was a path that Dan had not planned for in his career, but it was one that captured his interest in the challenges and issues he would face. And whereas, during his time as city manager, Dan was instrumental in stabilizing the health of the city's general fund budget as well as completing several of the largest capital projects in the city's history. And whereas, in addition to his work with the city, Dan has been a pivotal part of the community acting in a variety of roles throughout. Dan served as president of the Clowen County Fire Chiefs Association from 2000 to 2012 and president of the Rotary Club from 2011 to 2012. He was also the United Way of Clowen County Campaign Chair in 2011. And whereas, Dan has always been a champion of doing the right thing and has been a dear friend and mentor to many, his fellow coworkers and employees recognized the joy he brought to his work and the positive attitude with which he tackled the many challenges thrown his way. And whereas, Dan will retire from the city of Port Angeles tomorrow, September 5th, 2018. After thirty, I'm not gonna look at you. After 33 years of commendable service to the citizens and community, Dan has decided to dedicate his time to his family, including his wife with more than 40 years Jan, his daughter Teresa, a grade school teacher in Missouri, and his son Joel, a lieutenant with the Clowen County Fire District Number Three and their families. Now therefore, I Kate Dexter, Deputy Mayor, on behalf of Mayor Sissy Brook and the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim that Dan McKee is officially commended for his outstanding service to the city of Port Angeles. Council and staff, thank you for your professionalism, dedication to service, and kindness to the city of Port Angeles and the community. You will be missed and we are happy for the time you are now. You now have to devote to the people and activities you love. I'm gonna go ahead and hand this over to you for just a moment because I'm sure you have something you want to say.
Never. Well, I do wanna thank the city council for the privilege and honor to serve you as a city council and serve our community. And there was a little bit of arm twisting early on, but I have to say that it's been a great job that I've enjoyed immensely. But the work didn't get done. I mean, I have to say, I'm kind of a generalist in everything. I'm not a specialist in anything. I said that more than once. The people that get the work done are the staff. And I really enjoyed the job because we have an incredible community, we have an incredible staff, and it's been a great ride. But council, you're inheriting a great individual for the next city manager and the community also is. I'm excited for Nathan, I'm proud of Nathan. But Nathan, you're inheriting an incredible staff. They've been a joy to work with, every single one of you. You put up with me and I might contest. That's not an easy thing to do. And you've been great and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And so, I'm looking forward to spending more time with my family. And I've been really blessed in my career and especially the latter part of my career. I've always been, I've always felt that I've been supported by every single council member that I ever worked with. I felt like I was supported by the community even though we've had a lot of tough issues and a lot of tough conversations. And I've been supported by staff. And I've already said, I'm not an easy person to live with sometimes. But I've really been supported by my family and my wife. And it's not an easy career and she's been really good about it. So, thank you for everybody. Thank you for your support. And I really enjoy coming to work every day and it's good to leave when you do enjoy coming to work. And I can honestly say there has been just about no days that I haven't enjoyed going to work in 33 years. Thank you.
So, this is a part of a meeting where we generally have public comment and I hope that you will allow us a few moments. We'd like to take about 15 minutes to have a little reception for Dan out in the hall. So if everyone wants to go out, we have some cookies and some coffee. So please enjoy and take a minute to say hello. And we will come back at 6:30. That's actually 16 minutes, but.
I may have to fill the day off.
For that. So, we are going to move on to public comment. And on my list today, I have Cliff Force. So just a reminder, you just need to let us know you are a resident or business owner in Port Angeles.
Okay. And I'm Cliff Force and I am a business owner of my home resident. And my subject is building permits for roofing jobs. I've been a building contractor here for 42 years. And of course, I have seen, I remember back when we didn't have to get a building permit. And I remember they started charging. And I believe that when they started, first started with $6. We all howled like bandages. How terrible, how terrible. And then they only said, well, we only want you to get it in certain areas where, yeah, certain streets were commercial zones or many houses even off the street. They wanted to classify by our rate of roof. Just give it a little history. And up until, you know, like today, my average building permit is between $200 and $300. And even like last year, we did one where we had to tear the tile off. It was tons of tile. And you know, like boosting stuff. So it was a regular roofing job, but we had to take tile off to get rid of it. Very labor intensive. And that other permit was close to $900. The jobs vary. And roofing is a very expensive project. Dump charges, most homes are really close to $1,000 just in dump charges. And so, what I'm pointing out tonight is, you know, government entities, we're all talking the same. County really talking about how to create jobs, how to create jobs. And what I'm saying, my main point tonight is, homeowners are the job creators here. They are creating jobs for my crew. They have plumbers come in, whatever they have come in. These are our job creators and these are the people that are hiring lots of local people for us to work. So what's, I look at a building permit as a, I think it's a mistake to call it a fee. And I'll point that out right away. A fee insinuates that you actually get something in return. And I wanted to dispel the myth that there's actually any inspection, okay? There is no inspection. If you look on top of any of the trucks that the city people drive around when they go around inspect homes or anything like that. There are no ladders. And you wouldn't want them going up a ladder. Just look out, you drive, and look at the roof. Say, oh, do you want, you say, the police won't up on that roof? And they know what to look for. There are hundreds of different types of roofing. No, they wouldn't. They have a general idea about building and things are being built to go and inspect. Oh, I'm on the timer.
Yeah, sorry.
So anyway, I wanted to dispel that. This is not, this is not a fee that we give support. This is a tax. And I just think it's very a punishment. These people are already paying a sales tax which you get part of. They're maintaining their home, which keeps their value up so you get more property taxes. They're, you know, they are creating jobs. And so, I just, I've been, out in the county, we don't have to get a building permit. And so, the same house out in the county, okay? With the city enforces what they wanted enforced with their building permit, I can do the job $500 to $1,000 cheaper on the same house for the same money.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
Your time is up. If you want to speak again at the end, we have another public comment here.
Apparently, the subunit from a fire captain. And so, I told him on several of those occasions that he ought to be a city manager. And that was in 2005. That he ought to be a city manager. And I actually had an ulterior motive. He was gonna be the city manager and I was gonna be his manager. I was gonna have him provide seminars for other city managers. We would charge money for that. And I would get a copy. So, but anyway. He didn't have any, he didn't want to do that. He said, no, he would never be a city manager. He didn't want to do that. I would be repulsed by that. So, that's my story.
Well, Dan, Dan has been an individual that truly has been a privilege for me to work for. Dan's leadership and guidance, his ability to know what the right decision is before the issue even is presented to him, I think is something that I've always valued. I think very significant to me too is Dan's foresight to actually have and build a succession plan for the city manager's office. And most importantly, his ability to lay a groundwork for ultimately myself to succeed in this position. And I think if you really look at what that groundwork is that Dan has put forward, is laying groundwork for a fiscally responsible government at the city of Port Angeles, ensuring that we have a solid financial foundation, but also that we have a relationship-based foundation where we have great relationships with all of our other local government entities and agencies. Dan does a phenomenal job with building relationships and dealing with individuals and I think that lays an excellent groundwork for my success. I think too, and probably by far the most significant thing to me is what Dan has taught me about ensuring that I achieve a family balance. Recognizing that the time I spend with my family will never be regained and I need to make a point of prioritizing that. And I appreciate that more than anything. I think it's important too, though, to know how fun it is to work with someone with such a positive attitude. And I can tell you, there are multiple days and experiences that I remember with Dan where we had the most challenging meeting that you could ever imagine. Just to drop an example, the FAA. We came out of that meeting having so much fun even though it was probably one of the most challenging meetings that we'd ever experienced. We had fun. And that's because of Dan's positive attitude. And I think that's why the city is where it is today. Thanks to his positive attitude and his great laying a foundation for future work here at the city.
Dan and I, we don't always say hi to each other, but we always work at a professional level with each other. Dan was able to implement a number of things when he became city manager that I had been trying to advocate for for years. And start setting money aside for capital projects to build reserves that we can rely on in times of difficulty. Dan working with Byron and setting up the financial policies that we actually follow and getting council engaged and agreeing to do those things with us and having everyone work his teams. Because Dan really was a team member who built from the top and got everybody on the same page at the same time, which is such an important trait for leaders to have. And I will always value the time that I've worked with him. He's a wonderful mentor and a great boss to have. And I think the city with Nathan will have the same thing going forward because Dan did such a great job sharing all of the information across the board. He put in place policies and procedures and got involved in areas that other city managers have never really looked at before. And that was truly appreciated by me. Thank you, Dan, and I have a good retirement.
I don't have a whole lot to say because I'm bitter at that.
I never stopped you before.
What would you like Dan? You give him a microphone, he'll go on for two hours. Anyway, I've worked with a lot of different city managers and a lot of different leaders over my career. And I have to say, in the short time that I've known Dan, how fortunate and lucky you are to have such a class act as your city manager. And just a class act as a person too. And this is one thing that I really appreciate it. And I really appreciate the fact that he also has experience in knowing how to get CPR. Because he came into my office and said, you know, Steve, you know, we've been working on yellow walk negotiations with National Parks, you know, for a number of years now. And oh, by the way, we reached an agreement. You've got one week to make the transfer happen. And I went one way, heart stopped. And I said, this guy's got a great sense of humor. But nay, that we worked well together and I appreciate it. And I know he's gonna enjoy your retirement because being retired myself, I've enjoyed every minute of it and I get a great opportunity to come back and work for great communities like Port Angeles. And like I said, you're here missing because he is a class act. But I know the rest of the staff here is, I wouldn't trade it for anything. Just a wonderful people to work with and I've enjoyed it. And I just wanna thank you for the opportunity and the pleasure to have the opportunity to work with you. Thank you.
Well, I was gonna make a comment, but I didn't know Dan that long since he beat me out. Two years. I was actually very fortunate to meet Dan in my follow-up interview. And right away, I had a very strong sense in how respectful he is to people. He values people instantly. I mean, it was just, of course, I was very nervous thinking about this, meeting the city manager. But I mean, it was just a casual conversation. It was asking what I was doing in Port Angeles for a day. And it was just instantly respectful. And of course, my interactions with him for the next two years, a little one or two years, has been nothing but that. Very respectful of staff and always emphasizing what is best with the team, which I really appreciate. And then the fun story is, I have a four-year-old at home and I have to communicate my job to him once in a while. I have a boss, which is Mr. Nathan. And then I have a boss boss, which is Mr. Dan. And it's really cool that my boss boss is a little fire chief. So that's pretty cool. So they have to be cool almost.
So I've been your tenures and I came here from National Park Service and I remember this story. I've already shared it with Dan. He just remembered the same way. It doesn't matter. My first day of work, I'm standing at the threshold of Chief Golliver's office. And this really nice, friendly guy walks in and introduces himself as the fire chief, Dan McKee. And it's obvious that he knows about me. He knows that I've been in her buddy. And he makes that really clear. And he says, you know, what's the effect of, I'd love to work with you on my defibrillator program in place of part of it. And that of course, you know, gets my interest. And before I know it, I have people from the O.C. Foundation contacting me. And then before, that's a long after that Dan and I are going to a banquet and people are donating money to us. And you know, 10 years later, we've saved lives and we've got defibrillators and PAP cards, swim cards, county cards. And you know, Dan is a little bit of credit for kinda nudging me forward. And I remember he said, well, don't worry, it'll be value-added. You know, our mental thing is really cool. You guys are doing that. And that's my first impression of Dan. The other impression that Dan has the whole time I've been here is, you know, in the police world, there's a lot of things that we can't control and things that are, you know, dangerous and not as secure as they could be. But knowing that Dan was doing his job, I think about this, he was always gonna be good because Dan was where he was. Looking out for us, you know, thinking about the big picture stuff. And I really appreciate that, Dan. You know, thank you for that. There's a lot of things that people in my department couldn't realize that you did for us in keeping us safe, secure, and allowing us to do our job. But I know it and thank you very much.
I really didn't pay any attention. But I'm pretty sure Dan did something for the city after he left the fire department. But it wasn't very important at that rate. But he was, you know, a fire chief, which is clearly there's nothing more important than that. So everything else is just kinda gravy. But I do have two things I want to thank Dan for. First of all, I found out just a while ago that Dan broke several labor laws and probably several civil service laws when he hired me. And not many people know this, but I had recently looked at my personal file the other day and one of the rating sheets was there for when I was hired. And at the bottom of the rating sheet, there was a line that said, does this candidate get V preference? V, bigger V preference? And I figured, and then it's a whiteout after that. And I just assumed it was very important because I knew that. But I scraped the whiteout off it. It's vertical preference. And evidently, I got extra points for being not quite as tall as Dan and I probably won the job. So I guess now I do thank Dan. And it was a good thing and I do appreciate that. And the second thing is, I don't know how you can, how can you thank someone for the things they've done for you in their life? And I've never had a Mexi fried tonight. And I, this is, those are the things that make life. But we're also thanking and I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome.
This is why tonight's, or tomorrow night's program, I decided it's a little bit forecared. So I'll start off by talking a little bit about what I was telling Dan the other day. We had a little heart-to-heart in this office. And I just really thanked Dan for helping me out with my career. I was honest with him and told him that I was looking elsewhere. After 20-plus years in the city, he became director. And I don't know that he knew that. And 2013, he hired me as director of Parks and Recreation and enabled me to stay in my hometown and do what I love. And I couldn't have done that without Dan. So I just wanted him to know how much I appreciate that and my family. The second thing is, when I became director, you know, it's a new position. I was around a lot of people I didn't know. And so I figured, you know, I'm just gonna sit back for the first couple months, kinda take things in, learn a little bit. I remember me, Dan, was in a meeting with the port. There was four of us. We're sitting at the table in his office. And people know me, I like to wear a coat with socks. And I don't think Dan knew that at the time. Kinda had my legs crossed and Dan looks down. He looks at my socks. He points at my socks, looks at me. I just winked at. And I don't know if he was more shocked at my socks or that I was really confused why I winked at. And but again, Dan, thank you. But Nathan's totally correct when he says, you know, one thing that Dan really, really talked to us all, and I'm sure it wasn't just me and him, was about family. You know, the course of last year had some major family issues so I had to take some time off. And Dan's been someone that listens to you. And be like a father here. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, staff. And I did forget to mention, these are from Cory and Brian?
Ken.
Cory, Ken. They are Mexi fries from Taco Time. In case anyone on council is wondering. One of Dan's favorites. So he wanted to make sure we got it. Share it with them tonight.
As we know, we did break the rules as a facility guy. There's no meeting in the council chambers. I decided to let it go this one time. He went to the doctor recently and it finished at the grease levels in his bloodstream. It's just off the chart. Dan, you need to rule that.
Alright, let's go to council report. Have council member did.
So, visiting Dan one day. I was the new mayor and I was looking for a new city manager. And we needed someone who wasn't from a foreign country like Tennessee or Louisiana. We needed someone who was stable and was someone who was one of us. And we had some excitement in the city manager's office and we just needed stable leadership. So I visited with our fire chief and he tried to laugh me out of his office. He actually was not running for the city manager office. He was really very well comfortable and doing a great job running the fire department and sparring with the police chief at every opportunity. And I'm very grateful that he was able to have a paradigm shift and see, understand the needs of the city, the needs of the city, step out of his comfort zone, really, literally. And he said, well, we'll try it on an interim basis. So when he got in the city manager's office, was going through the desk, the lower left-hand drawer had a stack of, large stack of files. So those files were unsolved problems that just immediately got shoved in the drawer. And he started going through the files, inviting people, and discussing contentious issues, having everybody leave an hour and a half later, shaking hands, problem solved. And he said, this is fun, I like this. And I said, that's the kind of guy we need. Everybody likes him, knows him, respects him. And it's fun to be a problem solver. And so we've given him lots of challenges over the years, and he's still smiling. So that was you, and thanks. Thanks for being here when we needed you. It's been great. Thanks, Dan.
I'd like to thank Dan for always being there, because when I came into his office, he always knows that it was 100 miles an hour. I don't get to his office that often. And when I did, I said to him one day, I said, I know I can be kind of harsh. He didn't hesitate for one second to say, yep. And as I sit here some days, I have to think that Dan is truly a high-level professional. There are things that are set up here some days that would make anybody shake their head. And Dan always sits up there straight-faced. I don't know if he's up there biting his tongue or twiddling his thumbs, but he never manages to tilt his head to the side, or give the strange look, as if to say, what are you talking about? And that's only, it's always nice to see. It means that you're, you know, that he's showing respect to everybody else around him. And that is what a leader and a city manager should be. So to forewarn you, I went and saw a gentleman that I worked with years ago, he's retired. And I picked up a little logs from him, and I, I'd asked him something. He says, oh, I have to do this, and this, and this. I said, what's the big hurry? You're retired. He says, let me tell you something about retirement. He said, I've never worked harder in my life. He says, my wife has a list that will never end, and when I get to the end of it, thinking I'm done, there was another list underneath it. So hopefully you have some time to relax. But for some reason, I think that you have a list of projects that are lined up. So thank you very much for being with us. Gonna miss you. And Nathan gets to sit up there, straight-faced. Good luck.
Lindsay, are you still with us?
I am, and I can hear everyone.
Okay, so would you like to go next, please?
Sure. So again, I want to thank you for all of your leadership and effortship. I wish I didn't, I'd have run for council holders, but I would have had more time to work with you. And at the same time, I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to be working together with the staff team that you developed over the last couple of years. So last year, you went out of your way to be a candidate for council, even though you were probably already thinking about retirement. And I think that helps to illustrate the determination to improve the quality of local government, even as you were potentially about where you were gonna do that. And since January, you dedicated so much time to helping the council members get up to either council of duties. As Tess illustrated her reporter with the example she gave about five inches, I think it's safe to say that you're leading the city in a better place than it was at the start. Thank you for all your civil service, and I'll miss working with you.
Okay, so, you know, hearing some of the little anecdotes that have already been shared, a lot of things pop out at me that really hit the mark. One is when Nathan was talking about relationships, like, that's something that in my life, I can see and respect when someone else mentioned that. I had a, as Lindsay mentioned, we had met as candidates with the city manager for a short, maybe an hour or so. And after the election, I appreciate, we had another meeting, and I know once, what really impressed me was the willingness for Dan to just give us time. And early on, I was almost like, this can't be a good use of his time, to sit on top with me for an hour and a half. But that willingness to have those relationships, to take the time to, you know, just tell us about the issues of the city. And a lot of those earlier meetings, you know, he kind of had the agenda, where he had something he wanted to share with me, he had some information, some reading, and, you know, he kind of would lead the agenda. And then after I was seated, I remember one meeting in particular, it was one of my first, I think, meetings after I was seated as an official council member in January. And it was the Friday before a council meeting, and we sat down, I walked back to his office and sat down, and he just sat down, he kind of leaned back and smiled, as if, you know, and to kind of say, okay, what do you want to talk about? You're the, you know, and so just that, to me, that was a moment of respect, with this utter lack of condescension, but just saying, now you need to do your job. So, and we had a great conversation, I had some questions, and we went back and forth, and we, you know, sat down for an hour and talked about the city business. And just that respect that he gave to me, the, you know, the young guy on the council, it meant a lot. And, you know, the other thing is, as a young business owner, to see the focus that Dan puts on team is something that I think really, is something that took a long time for me to learn as a business owner, and to see that focus is inspiring, to just say, it's not about you, it's not about your great idea, it's about the team that you create. And the team that you create can do so much more than just you as a business owner or as an executive. And so I really appreciate those lessons and that, the respect. So thanks, thank you.
Jim?
Well, I don't really have a Dan McKean story, so I just wanted to say thanks. Thanks for being a mentor, thanks for being a cheerleader, thanks for being a confidant at times, and thanks for being, most of all, a friend. I wish you all the best in retirement, and remember, as we've talked before, always hold first class, because you and Jan are.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention quickly, for those of you who don't know, that Sissy, who could not be here tonight, remember, did give Dan some homework for his retirement. But both are homework projects that he should be excited about. They're online courses, was about photography, something that Dan has been interested in pursuing a little bit more, and the other one is cooking. So that will be a nice one for Jan, and I'm kind of hoping that he might perfect something that you want to bring before a council meeting sometime. So, no pressure, but let him get around to it. And I just wanted to say that one thing that I really, truly appreciate and respect about Dan is your ability to articulate not only a rational decision, a rational thought process behind your decision, but also a thoughtful reason for making decisions. And we had a recent process, a process that we went through recently that I really didn't like, and I went and talked to him about it, and I felt much better about it after talking to him. And I knew that I could go talk to him, and that he would be able to articulate why that made sense. And it's so much easier to say, okay, well, I don't have to like it, but at least I understand the rationale behind it. And I really appreciate that, that you could do that one, and that you took the time to articulate that when people had questions. So thank you very much. And at this point, I suppose we should excuse you from the meeting. Thank you again.
Well, thank you, and staff, thank you. It's, I can truly say that this, working with all of you has been one of the highlights of my life, and of course, one of the highlights of my career. But I'll the heck with the mic.
He still does what Carrie tells him.
As you might have guessed, I just do what she tells me to do, she kind of mentioned that earlier. But, but I truly, this, working with each one of you has been not just the highlight of my career, but one of the highlights of my life. And you, it really is all of you that makes things happen. And I couldn't have fallen into a better job, but more importantly, I couldn't have fallen into a better group. And I'm gonna enjoy sitting back on Tuesday evenings with a glass of wine, thinking about each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan Theresa, and enjoy your time. Thank you. It's all your time.
Somebody take his key away, because he really enjoys doing the work.
All right, so thank you all for sitting with us, while we appreciate and thank Dan for his hard work. We will move on now to section B, late items. And I know Public Works has a late item, Steve, would you like to tell us about that? Or we can put it under, sorry, I had already written it, under number three for information.
That'll be fine.
Okay, excellent. And for everyone, that's the, that's how we got, before we, all right, moving on to the consent agenda. Yes? Oh, you have late, sorry, yes, this council.
The subjects come up time and time again, and I think it's time that we look at the time we can discuss the building permits for roofs, because it is an expensive item to maintain for a home. We're trying to make affordable living here, and I'm not sure that's helping the process. But I think that I'd like to see us have a time where we can actually set aside to start discussing what we can do with this. A lot of times, these roofers are done before the inspector would even get there. I've seen these guys, it's off in the morning, and it's on in the afternoon. And I realize that it is a revenue loss to the city, but I would like to see us have an open discussion about it, and see where everybody's at on it.
Jim?
I agree. I have no real feel for how permit fees are developed, and how often they're reviewed, and by whom. So a discussion, obviously not tonight, but in the future, I would like to see a detailed description as to how permits, whether they be building or whatever, how the fees for those permits are developed, and again, how often they are reviewed, and by whom.
And I would like to just see comparison fees with similar cities of our type, and, you know, other, maybe other, while we're counting.
So is that something we could consider putting on an agenda in the future meeting? Or maybe a work session?
That is, I would recommend that we push it out a little bit, knowing what we have to cover. I think one of the things you have later on your agenda tonight will be under-city manager information, we're gonna walk you through. And I know that's a double-hit under-city manager information, since we kind of just did that. But we'll walk through some of the upcoming council meeting schedules and the work sessions that we have. I might suggest a late October, November timeframe for that.
Thank you. Any other late agenda items from council? All right, thank you, Councilmember, for stopping me from moving right here. All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like? Am I supposed to read it first? Sorry, I'm gonna, yes, does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
We'll pull number four. I didn't know when we did, but let's make way before that.
Okay. Any other items people like? Okay, then I'll read the consent agenda without number four. So number one, council, city council meeting? City council minutes from August 7th, 2018. The expenditure report from August 11th to August 24th, 2018, in the amount of $1,892,193.78. Industrial Water Channel sediment removal project award, and memorandum of understanding with Peninsula College COVID soccer.
Move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. And then let's go on to number four, Landfill Beach Nurishment Project, number CON 2018-29, final acceptance. And that is E64.
I'll just simply be reviewing myself.
Okay. So I just need to move-
Move to approve Landfill Beach Nurishment Project, number CON 2018-29.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Did you get that? Okay, thank you. Okay, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to ordinances not requiring council public hearing, public hearings. Number one, which is G1 in your packet, code compliance enforcement fund ordinance, and we will conduct the second meeting and have a discussion. Let me flip to that, so I can read it. This is an ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, creating a fund for the administration and prosecution of code compliance actions, and adding a new section 3.23 to chapter three of the Port Angeles Municipal Code. Is there staff that would like to address this?
Very briefly, this is the second reading, second reading of the ordinance. I've got no comments regarding the ordinance since the first reading. There is some clarification regarding the source of funding. And because of that clarification, the recommendation tonight is in three parts. One is to conduct a second reading, which you've done. Then the second recommendation is to adopt the ordinance. The third recommendation is to authorize the city manager to transfer into this fund $50,000 from 2017 budget savings.
All right, is there any discussion or questions from council?
This is very important. I'm happy we're doing this. I think it's come to our attention recently, it's long overdue, and I think we're really taking care of business here, so I support this. And because I strongly support it, I make a motion to, let me see if I can read that motion. You have to read the ordinance.
I did, so you can do, you can do two and three, because we, I read the, I did the second reading.
Okay. I move that we adopt the ordinance and authorize the city manager to transfer the fund to number 175, $50,000 from our 2017 budget savings.
Second.
Any further conversations or questions to session? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I think this is an important action, and I think that I would like to commend staff for recognizing that when we're talking about vacant property issues and code compliance issues, every issue is gonna be its own unique thing, and we need to have a lot of tools in our toolbox to successfully tackle this problem. I'm really excited that we have an upcoming work session, we're gonna be talking about code compliance. And so I think this is an important step as we move toward recognizing this as an issue that we need to take on as a city council. So I support the question.
Any other comments, questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. So number two is amended to chapter 2.18 relating to the hearing examiner of Port Angeles. Shall I read it, and then we can get some information from staff? This is an ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending chapter 2.18 relating to the hearing examiner of the Port Angeles Municipal Code. And who from staff would like to talk to us about that?
I'll start with it. The, for a long time, the city did not have a hearing examiner at all, and so what that meant is, talked about it, is a whole bunch of hearings on different items came for the city council. And when that happened, the city council had to wear a different hat. You had to act as quasi-judicial city makers, which is not your legislative role. And it also added the potential influence, or the potential for outside influence, or political influence on decisions. And so eventually, the city council adopted the hearing examiner system. At the, at first, there was some concern and uncertainty about whether it would work out well. I think it has worked out well. It allows for an independent third party who is trained in conducting hearings and making kind of decisions to handle them. And so we have identified, since the system hasn't been working well, we identified some additional items that could very well go to the hearing examiner. And so what we are proposing is to amend the ordinance to include a few more items within the scope of the hearing examiner's duties. Those items are listed in paragraph nine on page two of the draft, and in- Those items are listed in paragraph nine on page two of the draft and in subparagrafic C of the draft ordinance. Those are the additions. Everything else is the same. The ordinance changes the same except for those additions. So that's the proposal. This is the first, uh, reading, uh, of the ordinance, and I or other on staff can answer a question for you.
Okay. Thank you. And council, you, I will note that there was an amended, there was just a very short, um, clarification, language change. Uh, so you have a new draft on, on the dais that will replace the draft that was in the packet. Um, it just has, uh, one line item that's been clarified. Are there any questions or comments from council?
So I, I agree that the hearing examiner has been successful. I think that, that, that is something that has made our government a little more fair and, uh, transparent, and I think these are reasonable common sense changes, and so I support this.
All right, anyone else? Yes.
I have another question. Um, the uniform fee schedule, um, is that something that we will see in advance? Or is it, how is that going to be published, or, or, um, and also, how is it going to be developed? It says, it says here, the new section authorizes the city managers to establish uniform fees for filing appeals to be heard by the, uh, hearing examiner. How are those field fees going to be determined? Uh, will they be published in advance, and will we have an opportunity to review them before, uh, they're made, uh, opposed upon the public?
We, we would be more than happy to share those, uh, fees with city council. I think that would be our intent. I think the flexibility that is built in there is out of recognition of the fact that the hearings examiner is selected based on qualifications, not based on, um, the fees that they may charge. So in recognition of that, we need to ensure that ultimately for whichever process among the list of hearings examiner considerations, the hearings examiner, um, ultimately can provide us with a quote for what that process looks like, so that we can obtain estimates of what the cost is. And our goal is simply to recoup costs. It is not to make any profit whatsoever off of this. It's simply to ensure we can cover costs with the hearings examiner. But at this time, we don't have the predictability for every single process, because some of them haven't been done before.
That, that's what concerns me, because the, the verbant says uniform, and, uh, I, I guess I was not clear about how that would be applied.
I think a, a uniform hourly rate is correct.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, any other comments?
I'd like to-
Yes, Lindsay?
Yeah, sorry, there's about a one second delay, so it's, it's a little bit difficult to jump in. I'd like to agree with, uh, Councilmember Moran, um, comments about the appeal fees, and two comments there. One is that I appreciate the council member memo saying that we, um, we have concurrent authority with the city manager. I don't think it's necessary, but I'd like to see that concurrent authority expressly stated in this new, um, municipal code section. And I'd also like the municipal code section to expressly say that the city manager will provide council with, uh, a copy of any changes, uniform fees, or the explanation for those changes.
Yes. Do you want to respond to that?
So staff is, is more than happy to make those suggested changes, and certainly if, if council would prefer, we can simply formulate the suggested fees and present them for council, to council for approval as an alternative.
Okay. Does that sound, that sounds good?
That's not really what, I, I like the idea of concurrent authority, and I'd even be in favor of seeing more concurrent authority between the city manager and the council for things that are, I agree, administrative. It allows the city manager to be flexible without the burden of bringing forward ordinance changes or whatever the speed perspective is to those fees. And I think it allows it to be, um, you know, more resilient and adaptive as a city. Uh, I just want to make sure that we, we understand that that's concurrent authority with council, and that the manager will, will counsel in those changes.
Can you repeat the last sentence? I didn't quite understand what you said. I couldn't quite make it out. Sorry.
Sorry about that. I just want to make sure that the, um, the provision says that the city manager's authority is concurrent with the council, and also that the city manager will inform the council of any changes, and those are the principles.
Okay. Is that something that would be, what's the right, uh? Does anyone have any thoughts about that? Okay. Is that something we usually spell out, that we should spell out? What's your-
So, um, we certainly can make those changes.
Okay.
We typically don't say that, uh, kind of authority is concurrent with the city council, because that's always true. And so it doesn't need to be said, but if, if council would like that inserted, it does no harm, because that's always true. Uh, we simply don't include it because it is always true. So, that's fine. I have no objection one way or the other to that. And the additional, uh, provision of adding the requirement that the city manager notify the city council is certainly something that is appropriate, and we can add that in, no problem. So we can bring that back in the second reading if you'd like.
Okay. Does that sound acceptable? Okay. So let me just read it one more time, because I read it at the very beginning, and then, it is an ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, amending Chapter 2.18 relating to hearing examiner of the Port Angeles Municipal Code. And we will continue that to our meeting on September 18th. That brings us to other considerations. I1 in your packet, which is a joint, joint interest city of Squim consolidation contract. And I meant to clarify whether, um, Mr. West is going to take this or Attorney Lord?
Attorney Lord is going to take the item, but I do have a slight, um, modification to the recommendation and a quick update for council.
Okay, thank you.
See. The, um, City of Port Angeles has entered into a, uh, criminal justice agreement with Quale County that was, that became effective January 1st, 2016. The City of Squim entered into a separate but parallel, uh, agreement with the, uh, with Quale County, and it was effective at the same time. There's been some discussion, uh, by the county commissioners recently of whether that agreement should be terminated or changed. We're not sure exactly where that is leading, but the point of this agreement is to allow Squim and Port Angeles to, um, exchange ideas, strategies, and evaluations regarding, uh, that situation. Uh, this simply is a mechanism to allow those discussions to happen without waiver of anything that would be otherwise covered by the attorney client of the judge.
Thank you.
So council, earlier this morning, the county commissioners, uh, did take a look at considering the letter that they had sent to both the cities of Squim and Port Angeles with the intent to terminate the agreement. We do not have written results from the county as to what their determination was this morning. However, we do understand that they did discuss the potential of rescinding that letter. If that is the case, um, we certainly would appreciate them rescinding that letter, because we think there's a great opportunity to work collaboratively with the county, and that's something that we would like to pursue first and foremost, uh, making sure that we have a fact-based approach. In light of the potential, uh, for them to rescind that letter, I think it's important rather than move forward, uh, with this and have council approve it, I think it might be more appropriate to ask, to have the city manager authorized to sign the agreement if necessary, uh, following further development of that county action that was taken this morning.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, and what, are any questions or comments from council? Or a motion?
I move that we approve and authorize the city manager to sign the joint collaboration and confidentiality agreement if necessary.
Second. All right, any further comment or question? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you very much. All right. Now we are on to council reports that are about council business. Um, so let's start to my right with Councilwoman Moran.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just, uh, two quick things. First of all, on, uh, last Friday, another retiree occurred, the senior center, uh, uh, did very well, uh, and had a retired, Dee Belmonte, uh, who served for 16 years as the executive director of our senior center. She will be sorely missed, again, of a great positive influence to the senior center. And, uh, thank you, Corey, for the, uh, presentation, and, uh, I, I greatly appreciate, uh, the, send-off that the Parks and Recreation Department gave you, Dee. That was extremely, uh, well done and, uh, well deserved on her part. The second thing is, uh, I, I attended the, uh, overdose awareness walk on Friday night, uh, which was very, uh, very interesting, very cold, but, uh, but very interesting. There's about 200 people, uh, that walked from city, uh, I'm sorry, from courthouse down to the pier, and we listened to some, some, uh, people, very courageous people who would have recovered from, uh, from addiction. And so, uh, I would like to, uh, to recommend that we, we, uh, support those people and, and build that awareness. And then coming on the tent was the suicide awareness, uh, at six o'clock at, at the Veterans Park, so, um, but anyway, it was, uh, very interesting and very, uh, very moving to hear the success stories, I'd like to call, uh, the people that recovered from, uh, their challenges of life.
Thank you, and thank you for attending that. I was, um, not able to go outside to miss it. Mr.?
So today's obviously the first day of school for the Port Angeles School District. Um, my son is in elementary, second grade, and the school district just, um, recently, as most of us know probably, uh, finished a contract negotiation with the teachers' union, and it was a, you know, somewhat contentious but respectable process. So in the interest of relationships, I occurred to all my fellow council members to attend the school board meeting. Thank the school board members for their service. Thank them for, you know, they, they had a very difficult position with, um, you know, kind of historic, the last few years of the clearly funding being a very big impact on household districts' function. Uh, thank our new, brand new superintendent, who we were able to meet not too long ago here, um, for his leadership in those negotiations, and stop by school, volunteer, and thank teacher. Other than that, we finished Labor Day at my downtown restaurant, and I'm very excited for summer to be coming to a close, um, and have some good plans to get off season. Other than that, that's it.
Excellent. Uh, councilwoman Sherman Warren?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Merritt?
To pool board meeting, and I'm not sure what to report there, other than they're moving forward with the pool.
Councilwoman Morgan? Um, on, uh, two weeks from tomorrow, September 19th will be the last of the dates originally planned for concert on the pier, and we're going to move that venue to the concert on the bridges. And the reason we're doing that is it's a thank you concert, to thank the community for pulling together for our safety fences that are going up. The safety fences are looking good, but more, most importantly, they make us all, everyone, children walking across the bridges, all of us driving across the bridges, families living under the bridges, all of us driving up to come out or drive. Everyone feels safer and will feel safer, because the bridges historically have had high-stake defencing. I'm delighted that the council chose an attractive pattern. They're going to look really good. And so we're going to have a community block party, just basically to thank everyone. Everyone had a part in this. Um, and so it's going to be a historic night for all of us to participate, so we're working on having a good time. And, um, 8th Street Grill, um, normally closes early, but they're staying open for the concert on the bridges, and it's going to have a special on hot dogs and soda, so you all come. And, um, just a point of order, I thought under other considerations, there's number two for public works, did we forget?
Yeah, I put that in information.
Pardon me?
I put it in information, because it's just informational.
Just want to make sure we-
Thank you for making sure we didn't miss it. Um, my report, let's see. I want to thank you all for excusing my absence at the, uh, council meeting last month. I was able to attend the transit conference in Kennewick, and that was really fun. Saw some cool, new potential buses for the future of maybe the straight shot, for example. And just learned a lot about, um, what other agencies are doing and how people are moving forward, um, thinking about transit and just mobility in general. Uh, I thought it was, um, really quite interesting, and I think will benefit my work on the transit board. This weekend, I will be representing the City of Port Angeles at Rip Fest. So, um, I'm hoping that the rain forecast is not accurate, but we'll bring my rain here just in case. Looking forward to that, and we do, um, at some point, I need to check in, I'm not sure who I need to check in with, but, um, part of our agreement in, with them is that we will fly their flag the evening up to it, so I just wanted to check in and make sure we get that at some point this week, so I can take a picture and send it to them. The only other thing I wanted to make sure council, um, is aware of, and I know everyone got an email, but, um, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, um, I would ask you to maybe look at it again. I hope that Planet Action has an event, um, this Saturday. Uh, one of the guest speakers is Ken Baucham, and he is, um, a very well-known and respected oil researcher in this area, and I think we'll have some really important and, um, informative things to share about the, um, current state of our southern resident pot wells, um, and the issue that is near, you're twining, aren't you? I'm sorry, do you need to see it? So if anyone is available, I'd love it if someone could attend, or if anyone in the audience wants to attend. I'm sure it will be quite interesting. All right. That is all I have. So let's move on to information, city manager reports.
Many of you mayor and council, uh, we do have a number of items to report on tonight. I do want to remind council that on the 11th of September, there is a transportation commission tour, uh, taking place throughout Quale County. I know, uh, Jim Moran has volunteered for that. If there are other council members who want to volunteer to attend that, uh, please let staff know. Additionally, on September 12th, during the day, uh, in council chambers, I believe that begins at 9:00 AM, uh, the Transportation Commission will actually meet in this room, and there will be presentations, uh, by most of the jurisdictions within Quale County. I also want to note that on September 12th, uh, we've rescheduled your think tank to consolidate it with a joint planning commission meeting, and that's scheduled, I believe, for 6:00 PM on September 12th. The draft agenda is incorporated, uh, in your packet. If you have any, uh, changes or concerns with that agenda, please let us know, and that is scheduled to go from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM on September 12th. Additionally, I wanted to walk through some upcoming meetings. Uh, we do have tentatively scheduled on September 20th, a tour of lower Alakal and tribal facilities occurring between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. Uh, also, on September 25th, uh, we have a scheduled work session on code compliance. Uh, we have a potential budget meeting scheduled, uh, or work session for October 12th from 5:00 to 7:00. Uh, also, on October 23rd, uh, budget work session scheduled also from 5:00 to 7:00. Uh, we are holding the November 20th, or sorry, the November 13th date, uh, for budget follow-up if necessary, um, and then anticipate a first reading on November 20th, as well as a second reading of the budget on December 4th. Just want to make sure you're aware of all those key meeting dates coming up for the remainder of this year.
So what was the first one, October?
The first one in October was October 12th.
That's on Friday?
No, it's Wednesday. Oh, October 12th? September 12th is the next. Is that what you were asking, the next meeting coming up?
You, you said October 12th. Five to seven.
Budget for the 23rd. The first night, budget for-
My apologies, October 12th is actually when you- My apologies, October 12 is actually when you will receive the budget. It is not a...
Okay.
My apologies.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that we can be prepared for...
And what was the potential joint meeting with the Laurel contract date?
September 20 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And counsel, at this point, I would like Interim Director Clark to provide an update on the stage-two water shortage declaration.
Thank you very much, members of the council. Last week, the city manager, in accordance with the city's Water Shortage Response Ordinance, chapter 13.46 of the municipal code, declared a stage-two water shortage declaration. This occurs, in the packet, you have a memorandum that identifies the various five stages of various water emergencies that are provided in the municipal code. Stage-two emergency requires voluntary conservation, and this occurs when the flow of the Ello River drops below 400 cubic feet per second. Currently, right now, it rids for a period of time, three days or more. And currently, right now, the Ello River at the USGS, the US Geological Survey gauge located at Donald Bridge, is currently at 334 CFS. So we're going to continue to monitor the situation, but we are going to be putting out information to the public to let them know that voluntary conservation measures are warranted at this point in time. If this condition continues, then we will be working with the council to go to the next step, which was to declare a stage-three emergency. Much to your chagrin, the forecast looks like rain. And some of us in the community probably would like to have rain, others would not, I'm sorry.
Fair enough. I'll wear my jacket, it's fine. Rain is a word.
Anyway, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
I just have a question about how we put the information out. I'm sure it will go in a paper, but I wonder, because you have a Facebook page for public works, if you would be willing to put an announcement on there, because that would easily be shared on the Port Angeles, Washington Facebook group that has quite a few people. And I think putting it out on Facebook might be a nice way to make sure that a large number of people see the information. If that's something we can do.
It's something we can do.
That would be great. I'll be happy to share that.
These low flows are something that's expected in the hot summer months, and I think the public, you know, it's... This is something that conservative water saves us money on the utility bills. It's better for the fish, it's better for the Ello River, it's better for everyone, and these are issues that we're going to see more often going forward in the future. So this is great.
Thank you very much. Okay. We will conclude our meeting with a second public comment period. Do you have anyone signed up? As soon as you know. So is there anyone who would like to go ahead and just come up? Don't all rush at once. Same rule, three minutes, and you just state your name and whether or not you are president of Port Angeles or business owner in Port Angeles. Thank you.
Okay. Cliff course, and I'm a... I know business, and I know... I'll be able to speed quicker. So I would love to see some discussion. I would love to be a part of the discussion. I've done this for a long time, and I'm sure if you have any kind of questions about rook, I can answer them. You know, any kind of concerns that you have about a job being done properly and that type of thing that come up. Like I said, I just really would love to see a discussion. You know, and I was here, being here like six months ago, and this is where I... My real big concern is, and I was here, and people... Last time, we had a rate increase for city services, electricity, and water. And there's people that had their homes for all these years, got a fixed income, and they're living in one room. They're trying to conserve heat, because it's either pay the bill, and if the bill's going to be more, they'll be cutting back on food, okay? That's, of course, worst-case scenario, but I deal with people all the time who have to go down and refinance their home, have to go out and use their equity in their home to put on a roof. So every 200 or 300 bucks that gets added to that job is big to them. It's a huge factor, because they're actually paying interest on that part of the money, too. So it... To me, it is a very unfair thing, and I don't think it's needed. And like I said, I would love to be a part of the discussion. If you had any kind of questions, I would love to be, you know, go to my level and have a discussion and be here for that, so I can be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this evening about any issue in particular, or not in particular? All right. Well, seeing none, I would say thank you all, and Mr. West, we look forward to moving... We look forward to working with you as our city manager at all future meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.